5:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Manager? Do you have a form on present?
Tonight, we have two items on our workshop. The first is an item related to the Denton County Homeless Coalition. And as you know, Councilwoman Gilmore is our representative on that committee. And so with that, I'm going to turn this item over to Hannah for introduction.
So just to kind of give you guys a little space, and I know for those of you who are on social media, you're seeing this, there's definitely been some folks talking about how housing accessibility, availability is becoming a challenge. And it's not just Louisville, it's nationwide. We have multiple pressures creating some unique challenges. And so tonight, the homelessness leadership team is going to talk to you a little bit about the direction that we're trying to gather as a county and ways that maybe we can help bridge the gap. So there's some different things. As we talked about the last time they were here, we talked about now that we have the data and we know what we have and we know what we're missing as far as homeless living and the continuum there that we have of different types of housing options. So tonight is to give you a little bit more and see where we can go. So Courtney, are you up? So Courtney Cross is here, and I think everybody's met Courtney before. It's yours, drive.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name is Courtney Cross. I'm the Director of Homelessness Initiatives with United Way of Denton County, recent graduate of Leadership Louisville with the Chamber. So I got to see the ins and outs of Louisville. Glad to be back and talking with you guys today. So we're here today on behalf of Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. It's a countywide collective impact initiative to ensure that homelessness is rare, brief, and non-recurring. We've been around since May of 2016, and we do have a strategic plan. We've outlined some strategic goals around improvement of our homelessness data management and also increasing access to housing. For today's presentation, we're just going to give you a brief update on kind of where we stand in terms of progress made in Louisville. I only have a short amount of time. I hope I put enough information in your packets and in the folders that I gave you for some background info, but if you'd like to follow up, feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call. So you guys did allocate $4,000 to our coordinated entry efforts here in Louisville. I'm going to talk to you about what we've done with that and make another request of you today. So just a little friendly reminder, coordinated entry is a process that aims to assess every person experiencing homelessness based on their need and connect them to the most appropriate housing intervention. This is accomplished through the implementation of a common intake assessment and referral process across our providers. We've seen a lot of successes streamlined in the front end of our process with this implementation. We do have someone in our agency who, she oversees our database, and she is constantly in agencies throughout the county helping to implement this process, training case managers, training intake staff, training directors of agencies even in our countywide process. And this is something that's been collectively agreed upon by multiple partners. You'll see over there, just a little snippet of something that we use to kind of promote this throughout the community, but all those agencies listed there are what we call front door agencies. We've chosen a multiple point of entry approach to this process, but these entities have implemented a common intake and assessment process, which means someone experiencing homelessness today, if they're eligible for the services that this agency provides, can go to any one of these places listed here, answer a few questions, have their information put into shared database, and then that gives us as a county, a list of people experiencing literal homelessness prioritized by their need, by their vulnerabilities. So that allows us to use our often limited resources that we have to house people and prioritize them for those folks who are at risk of dying on the street due to their homelessness. Just a little bit of a Louisville update for you. We are working with Salvation Army here in Louisville to bring them on the system. They see a lot of folks with a variety, a range of needs. But once we have them up and running as a front door, we're very, we know we're going to see a lot more need here in the county, which what we're hoping to do with that is to ensure that a lot of our rental assistance resources that are available throughout the county are actually accessible to folks here in Louisville and not just further north in the county. Christian Community Action, we've brought on three new users. We are starting to track their data more closely. Just a little bit of insight, they track more at-risk homeless populations versus literal. So that means that's your folks who are at risk of addiction, can't pay their light bill, that sort of thing. They would utilize CCA services. In this next year, one of our goals is to expand our coordinated entry process to include at-risk homelessness. So you'll see on the next slide here in just a minute, we've captured a lot of really good data around people who are actually in need of housing right now in our county, and we're hoping to expand that to make sure that we accurately capture the data around those who are at risk of homelessness. And what that does is allows us as a collective, as a leadership team, to really implement systems change. Because as we're measuring system performance, we can go back to our providers, go back to our agencies, and even funders and say, this is what we need to do to implement change within our system. We have tracked, so our annual point in time count is an annual census of people experiencing literal homelessness on the street. I will say that through some more focused coordinated entry efforts here in Louisville, we do have a street outreach coordinator with Giving Help Incorporated, who's been able to go out with Louisville PD, it's been really effective, being able to reach some folks that are maybe in encampments that may not come into access resources, that need access to, obviously, housing, but mental health resources, general health resources, and that sort of thing. And that really led to us expanding our point in time count. We had, usually it's, we have the headquarters up in Denton, and we send volunteers out throughout the county, and this year was the first time we were able to have a Louisville headquarters. Just over 20 volunteers canvassed the whole of Louisville and completed over 30 surveys. And that means they interview people who are experiencing literal homelessness on the street here in Louisville. We do have some homeless prevention numbers, which as I mentioned, that's what CCA does a lot of as at-risk homeless. We've captured about 168 households in the system since January of last year, and year to date, we're at about 90, yeah, I think it's about 75 households in our system who are at risk of homelessness here in Louisville. So as you'll see, and as I mentioned, we have gotten a lot better at tracking our data. A couple of years ago, we sat down and said, let's see what the data tells us and improve what we're doing, and then we realized we didn't have any. So we had to implement coordinated entry, and that's what these numbers are right here. It's basically a prioritized grouping of housing need in our county. What we focus on a lot here are these two, is rapid rehousing and permanent supportive. The rapid is more short-term, three to six months in our community, rental assistance, get back on your feet, get back into housing. And the permanent supportive is for those folks who probably won't be able to live on their own, they're living with a mental or physical disability that limits their ability to have a regular or sufficient source of income. So as I mentioned, one of our strategic goals is to increase access to housing. And until we can mobilize enough resources to actually increase the number of units in our county, we do have consistently a 96% to 98% occupancy rate, which many know is basically a 100% occupancy rate because you can't keep every unit full at all times. So we know we need to build more units, and that is on the horizon. And we are working with leaders throughout the county to determine, do we even have the right financial institutions within our county to start moving towards a goal like that. But until then, we've developed a landlord outreach initiative, and this has been collaboratively developed by agencies across the county. It's called Doors for Denton County. We've observed some similar models in Austin, and Houston, and Seattle. But really what this does is creates a single point of contact, a single liaison between the nonprofit and the housing communities, the real estate communities. So instead of each agency going out on their own, trying to mostly appeal to the altruistic side of private landlords and property managers, this unites the nonprofit community and really appeals to the business model of landlords, knowing that, you know, there is a perceived risk to take on families, to rent to families that have a credit or criminal background that may put you at risk as a business owner. So we've established something called the Denton County Barriers Fund, which we'll get to in just a moment. But really, the point of this is to have that housing navigator who has a working knowledge of all of the housing subsidies in the county through various nonprofits, and also has good working relationship with local real estate professionals. Both, you know, each of those industries operate at very different paces and speak very different languages. And so having that single point of contact to not only efficiently place people into housing, but be there if and when a crisis or an issue arises. We've observed, has worked very well in a lot of other communities. We've scaled it down quite a bit for our county. Places like Austin, you know, a lead agency for their service area would train and place a housing navigator within each and every agency in their county. We're starting with one to try and assist the majority of our providers here in the county. And we have, through various forms of time measurement, identified that there'll be about a 25% increase in case management capacity. Just wanted to splash this up there to show you that right now, when someone enters our system through our coordinated entry process, the case manager's goal is to accomplish all of this with them. So not only is it housing search and placement, which is this blue over here, it's all this white, which is, do you have a sufficient income? Are you getting all the benefits you could get? Can we get you connected to a training to increase your income? Are you working at all? Do you have the necessary documents to get into housing? Are you truly housing ready? If I take you to a landlord now, would they even kind of give you the time of day? Not based on what we think you're eligible for, but based on what their business model says they can and can't accept. So by implementing a housing navigator, we'd be freeing up those case managers to do a lot of that, back in work, meet those immediate needs of those families, get them connected to other resources, things like credit counseling, budget counseling. If you're spending too much on food, we have a plethora of food banks in the county, that sort of thing. We have reached out to Salvation Army here in Louisville. They get requests daily for something along the lines of housing navigation. So either folks that have money in their hand, or are native resources and just don't know how to go out there and advocate for themselves. It's a very competitive housing market right now, as many, you know? And so this position will help with that. One other thing I did want to mention is according to our metrics and goals we set out for our Emergency Solutions Grant, which we receive as a county, we're a little behind on our metrics for actually housing people. And it is partially due to our lack of housing, but it's also partially due to a bottleneck that happens with our case managers who aren't able to do all of this as efficiently as we need. Councilwoman, you had a little handout in your packet, but basically, this one right here outlines our housing need, and on the back, you'll see a breakdown, trying to make it as straightforward as possible, but you'll see a breakdown of need, capacity, and then we've kind of measured, we've quantified that gap for you. But what I want to point out is that right now, according to our funding that we have available through our ESG, our Emergency Solutions Grant, we need to be housing about seven families, seven households a month. And so far, since November, we've housed about 13. So we're behind. We're only hitting about 31% of our target right now. So very quickly here, we have established what's called the Denton County Barriers Fund. And this was actually, this is actually the United Way of Denton County acting as fiscal agent for the Denton County Homeless Coalition. There's a lot of groups. I have a really cool little process map I can send you later if you want to know more. But basically, what you need to know is, as the homeless coalition is going out, trying to make change, trying to raise awareness about homelessness, they have no way to say, here, give to our cause. And really, no way to kind of start building some tools in their arsenal to be able to really attack this in an effective way. So what this fund does is provide family client support directly to families. Through a case manager, a family can request up to $800 per household per year for things like obtaining critical documents, getting a uniform for a new job, card payment, if they miss their card payment, they're going to miss their rent, you know? It's a fund of last resort. So we do ask that providers provide proof that they've exhausted all of the resources in the community, but this is here. It's really all about housing stability. How can we keep them housed, get them housed, instead of putting them at risk of losing their housing? The community outreach piece really allows the coalition to do what we do better, like our point in time counts and things like that. And then the risk communication is that piece that we just reviewed. So not only does the housing navigator work with case managers to better advocate for these families who may have some low misses on their credit or criminal record, but they can provide financial assurances through a contract, memorandum of understanding, to say, we know what it costs to go to, you know, through eviction court. We'll cover up to, you know, so many days or so many months of lost rent if this family does break their lease. Basically speaking their language and saying, look, we know you're taking this on as a liability. We've got some financial assurances here if you need to cash them in at any time during this initial lease with this family. So we need a housing navigator. This position really will be key. We're never going to have enough case managers to meet the need, that's just kind of how it is. If I had my magic wand, I'd probably hire about 20, 30 more case managers right now because a lot of what it comes down to is a lack of support for these families and having that assistance to really navigate what already exists instead of creating new programs and new funds, really creating avenues for them to better navigate these things and to get placed quickly into housing. And some of these folks just have not been informed or not aware of how to navigate, you know, the rental market on their own. They don't know how to advocate for themselves, they don't know how to, you know, network and things like that. So this position really will kind of, like it says, just improve relationships between the nonprofit and for-profit communities, provide those financial assurances, and really take on that housing search and placement piece. And in Louisville, we've identified Journey to Dream, House Place, Salvation Army, here in Louisville, and CCA as possible partners for this housing navigator. We've broken down, so this is one year, the $55,430 is one year of salary plus benefits for this position. And we kind of broke down, wanted to show you who else we're knocking on the doors of for this request. We are talking to the city and the county. This ask, this breakdown here just follows the Emergency Solutions Grant stopgap funding percentages. So what you guys, Denton and the county, put in when we lost that $600,000, we've broken it down similarly. We're not married to these amounts, but this is just kind of, we kind of took with what has happened in the past, but broken it down by percentage. And these are the asks that we're taking. We are also seeking funding from smaller towns, knowing that their budgets are a bit more limited, and grant funding as well. Okay, I might have gone over my time, Donna, I'm sorry. But does anyone have any questions?
Council, the issue that we will face, number one, I need direction about whether you want me to fund this request. So Courtney, tell me about your timing. So when would you see this position being added?
As soon as we get funding. We're aiming for mid to late summer, really.
It would be a mid-year request?
Yes, okay. And the bottom line really is...
I would likely have to go to fund balance, and it'd be general fund?
Anybody have any comments on that?
First question I have is, you have City of Louisville, City of Denton, Denton County Commissioners Court. So City of Louisville, City of Denton, are those the only two places you've identified that homeless come from?
No, and that's a little bit harder to track. We do try and ask it through various assessments and through our annual homeless census. That's where kind of the bulk of our providers reside, and where we do see in our county locally, we do see most people in those higher dropped areas like Denton and Louisville. We know that there are maybe folks further south of the county, but just based on kind of, you know, where, it's basically how our providers and how we survey it, so.
I guess my question really is more, I'm staying within Denton County, is Corinth the colony, the little way home, but other cities, I don't see them out there. Are you presenting to them? Do homeless not come from these cities?
The services as they're being provided by those agencies would reflect that there's a higher percentage of clients being served in Louisville, Denton, and then the balance across the county in a non-consistent pattern.
To answer your...
My question is not exactly being served. My question is, where is the origin?
And that is difficult to track. We, like I said, we do ask that just about every year on our annual homeless census. Our homeless census is also very volunteer-based, so it's a little bit more difficult for us to go further out in the county. We do work closely with the Colton County Homeless Coalition, and they did survey someone out in the Frisco area who was technically in Denton County. So to your point, no, these aren't the only places where people become homeless.
I think the data is highly unreliable. To give you a firm answer on origins and out city, we can give you some gut feels, but I don't think we can back it up with data.
I think the flip side of the point is that if this is where most of the services are being provided, then because it's where most of the services are being provided, then it's being given most of the responsibility for cost. And I'm not sure that's a reasonable balance.
That's fair.
So the more responsibility we take on for homeless, the more we get saddled with the cost.
I think that's where the point in time count is helpful, because the point in time count truly tells us where they were on a given day of the year, in your city or another city.
So what did you find from, what other cities did you find?
We did survey in Flowerbound, Anne Hele, the Little area. We didn't complete, we didn't actually find anyone to survey in those areas. Sanger, we did find folks in Sanger. We did kind of, we tried to canvass further north in the county. Those folks are, they're pretty hidden pretty well.
Very few in Northlake, Justin.
Right.
What about the colony in Corinth?
We did not come across anyone in Corinth. Do keep in mind, this is a one-day survey, one-time a year. So depending on if our volunteers managed to kind of catch people when they were out during the day, we did find anyone in Corinth. The colony, we didn't, I get more calls for people at risk of becoming homeless from the colony, to be honest. Less of our literal homeless population and more of folks who are at risk of eviction.
Say that again, the first part, you get more calls?
I get more calls for homeless prevention assistance in the colony. So folks are calling because they're at risk of eviction or not able to pay their electric bill or that sort of thing.
Yeah, financially, financially, housing.
I guess my, you know, my request or my concern would be if you only presented to the City of Louisville, the City of Denton, and Denton Commissioners Court, and those are the only three that you're requesting money from, are they the only three that you should be requesting money from?
And they're seeking support.
Yeah, we are going to other smaller towns. We're meeting with Lake Dallas here in a couple weeks, and Sanger, and that sort of thing, so.
So Mayor Heineman has invited us into the City of Corinth.
So when do you expect to complete that?
We would hit those communities over the summer, but I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not very hopeful that they'll have funding for us.
And one of the reasons why I thought this was timely is that you're talking about a position, and if we do these as a one-off and a $4,000 here, or $4,000 there, what ends up happening is that we create some real challenges, you know, year after year, where's the funding stability? And Neil, you handle nonprofits, so you know, the funding stability is always a challenge. So if we're going to have the conversation, let's have it now, let's see if there's something we can do, and if not, then is there something we can allocate into the budget if we're going to have that kind of a conversation, so.
But you kind of hit the very reason I'm asking this question, is that when you're only looking at three sources of funding, which it sounds like you're going to try to find others, your risk of volatility, the less than the funding sources, the greater the risk for volatility. The greater the number of funding sources, the less the risk for volatility, because you're not relying heavily on one, or two, or three sources, and really here, two, to fund this. And so that's where I'm headed.
Yeah, and I think the key here is that because of the relationship and history that, you know, Louisville, Denton, and the county have with funding social services, we really see this as an opportunity to really incubate this position. And to the point of sustainability, we're hoping to let the value be kind of apparent very quickly with this position, and it can be worked into sort of a cost share with agencies, being able to either portion off small parts of their grants or that kind of thing.
Well, I think it's probably just as likely that our United Way Board of Directors, if we're not successful finding new funding for this position, they'll be allocating campaign, United Way Workplace Campaign funding away from our 19 partner agencies into something like this because it increases capacity and efficiency. And that's sadly robbing from Peter to pay Paul, but that is a pretty reliable, sustainable administration. Somebody's going to lose in that one.
So that was one of my questions, Gary. So you would see this decision to provide funding more than one time?
I think if we could pilot this in the 2018 year and demonstrate its effectiveness, we would feel much more confident about long-term funding. Case in point, we secured a Health and Human Services Grant for two veteran navigator positions, pilot position. And in the course of that grant year, we committed to the state to serve 200 veterans in crisis. Our two caseworkers served 260 veterans in crisis. We then went to Paul Bastic, Denton County Veteran Service Office with a proposal, don't you think these veterans navigators really should reside in the county? He felt very strongly about that. Commissioner Mitchell has supported that, so he placed those two STEs in his county budget for 1819. So that, if we can demonstrate as a community something is effective, then it gives us more leverage, especially with the county. And we're optimistic that with change in leadership in the county, that there's a possibility that we'll see Denton County commit more funding to social services. It's just a conversation we've had with Commissioner Eads and his possible future change in assignment, but that's not a guarantee either. And we've also been encouraged that Commissioner Eads, if elected a county judge, would be interested in pulling CDBG funding into the county for the first time in many years. And that could be a source of funding for a position like this.
So the other layer to my thought is that you really need more than one of these. And, oh, right. And so to get more than one, and you've been through, so you mentioned need more than a nonprofit, to get more than one, it's just like grants, you have to ask more than one time.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, I'm kind of wanting to hear what's the game plan to start asking, you know, a lot of other cities to participate to some degree and get a no, which you're used to getting with that first grant request, and coming back and asking if you get it again till you officially get a yes. And I'm sure you can grow this program.
Oh, absolutely. We did like this position, I believe in the HB 13 application, is that correct?
Not this one.
Not this one, I'm thinking of a different one. We get aggressive and try to write positions like this and as many grants as we possibly can, but knowing that grants are typically won and done.
Yeah, but I'm speaking grants in terms of this case, cities. I'm drawing in parallel.
Frankly, we're here tonight because we missed the window for the annual CDBG or Community Development Grant by about a month or so. And if your answer is wait until that cycle opens again and applies to that process, then we'll understand what our next steps are.
I think my answer, my interim answer is me talking to other cities. You know, like I said, it's like applying for grants. You're really asking somebody to give you some money, so you're going to ask a city, and they're going to say no, and then you're going to ask them again, and they'll say no, and maybe it's the third or fourth time. But that's the character of grants themselves, is that you don't get it the first time. They have to keep hearing it, to keep talking about it, to keep seeing the need, and then look around and see other people responding, and then you get the picture.
Sure.
Since we have a representative from the City of Denton, has Denton approved this?
No, we haven't had a presentation, but we fund $80,000 of two salaries through the United Way already for Courtney's position and for the position of a coordinated entry currently, as well as we give about $94,000, $95,000 to grants to the agencies who are delivering the service. And I would point out that that top line has everything to do with the loss of that funding two years ago, and we are now currently really at only 31% of our meeting that goal for 2018. So that puts it at risk of losing funding. So for me, this is a bit of a cost saving, that we can invest in this housing navigator because the primary reason people aren't getting housed through the grant is because we can't get them into units. We have the money, we just can't get doors open. So this position does everything for that particular need, and if we don't meet it, we're going to lose this grant again.
TJ?
Well, I can't lay it out any clearer than that. Thanks for the, and this is why I love having Dani on, she makes those connections. You know, we found a value. We know there's a gap. We have residents asking if there's things that we can do for this gap, and I know we're working on some other projects as well. If there's a way for us to provide even a part, because I know we're not, you know, we're already six months into the year of this particular position, this will, we'll know if it's effective in a very short period of time, and I don't have any doubts that it's going to be effective because we do, we have the resources up because we've got a lot more focus as a county than we did last year, and those reports that I've sent to you guys kind of show you how that's working. We know what the gap is, and we know what the man hours are to fill the gap. It's all about matchmaking at this point.
Thank you.
I just want just a bit of clarification here. So the $22,000, $826, that's a one-time, not an annual, since it's an annual position, I mean, it's not...
We would like to see it replaced one year before we would ask for any, send me your funding.
But there's potential for an additional year to come on that, depends on granting.
And then the other question is, is if it's a summertime position, do we need to do the $22,000 at once when we have a budget that'll be starting later in the year? Is it something that we can, we only need to come up with, I don't know, four, $5,000, and then if it's in the budget for... and then if it's in the budget for the next?
Is this a cost spread over a year, correct?
Sorry?
Is this 55 a cost spread over a year?
Correct. And includes salary benefits.
So don't necessarily have to dip in for $22,000 right now?
Right.
I agree with what Brent said. If we can allocate that, of course, before we get to the budget session in August, that should significantly reduce that. And we can deal with it during the budget for next year. So I'm not just pulling 22 out, you know, maybe goes to general fund. I'm not excited about that, but I do want to help. Definitely, actually, what Neil is saying, we definitely need to reach out to more folks and not just keep going, coming back to the same pot. We've got a lot of people who need your help. And, you know, maybe push our commissioners to, you know, be more generous to help out.
We would love your help on that front as well. The more phone calls and emails, the better.
CDBG funding would be great. That would be good for them.
And we believe that Commissioner Eads has...
I think if we can allocate this whatever amount for those few months, I think that's the best way.
Ah, what you got?
In the interest of time, I will say Councilman Jones comments my own.
So what I hear is to get an allocation of how much would be necessary for this year. And that would be what we'd be willing to do and I would put the rest of that in the budget.
Let's see what John came up with on the other jurisdictions. Yes, sir. Maybe closely based on population. Okay.
Maybe use us as that first voice that they might need to step up a little bit more.
Thank you.
Some calls from the council.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a list of things I'm going to have to do because of this.
Sorry.
Maybe he doesn't have a councilman.
That's all I needed on that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our mid-year report.
Are we going to pay the $22,000 in here?
Well, if you asked me to. So the mid-year report is really designed to bring out up-to-date from where you last saw the budget when you adopted it. We've actually gone through the 2016-17 actuals, which you saw from Brenda and our outside auditors back in March. We've also had six months now to analyze and see where we are this fiscal year. And we've determined that there are a couple of supplemental appropriations that we need to request tonight. The operating fund balances improved 9.97 million, and that's from what we expected. So at budget, we expected it to be 9.97 lower than it is today. So that's good news. Most of that is primarily in the general fund, where sales tax was up 3.2 million from our original budget. So that was a very strong sales tax year. We also had increases in property tax, host fees, which were up about $640,000 from what we budgeted. Building permits were up about $300,000. So our revenue did really well last fiscal year. The expenditures came in under budget by about $2.6 million, and almost all of that was salary savings. We did have a little bit in fuel savings as well, as gas prices were a bit lower. In the utility fund, the fund balance also increased 2.98 million. Revenues were $2 million overestimates, and that was capital recovery fees primarily and a little bit in our sewer service, including the wholesale sewer service. And the expenditures came in under budget. Some of that was due to an economic development agreement that didn't quite meet the timing of what we budgeted, as well as savings in purchased water. We saved about $200,000 there. So that was your 1617. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the current fiscal year and what we're seeing in the general fund revenue. Actual sales tax receipts this fiscal year are already outpacing last year's receipts by 2%. So that means our, last year's collection was 28.6 million. If we're outpacing that, our estimate is now over $30 million for the first time in sales tax for the current fiscal year. Our property tax, we've already collected 100% of what we budgeted, and that's $30.6 million in property tax this fiscal year. Building permits and plan reviews are also up $300,000. And that's from the $2 million that we budgeted, so that you can put that in perspective. The commercial refuse waste management landfill host fees are expected to increase $250,000 from the $3.5 million that we budgeted. Camelot and Republic are anticipated to meet budget projections, so they're pretty much about off-track right now for our budget. There are a couple of revenue sources that we are concerned about. One of those continues to be Frontier Cable. They just keep going down and down. Their business plan is not working, whatever they're doing. So we keep seeing that that was a decrease last fiscal year, and the trend is continuing this fiscal year. We are seeing a bit of that move over to other cable providers, but not the whole amount. So that leads me to believe that some are just getting out of the whole cable business and not going to another provider. Core funds and warrant fees are also estimated down this fiscal year. And that also continues a trend from last fiscal year where they were down as well. We do have a couple of items in the new revenue in the general fund. We talked about backflow testing as a new revenue source when you approve the budget. We have been charging that $25 fee, and it's been working well for our health services department. We've collected $9,281 so far. So we will budget that for the rest of the year and then use that as a basis for our projection for next fiscal year. Old Town parking violations. Today, we've only been giving out warrant warnings and not actual tickets. So we have had just a turnover in that position and expect to have somebody, I think a job offer has already been made and they'll be on board again next couple of weeks.
What's the quantity of violations that we're getting, do we have?
Back-end parking mostly. Some of the two-way parking, but it's mostly back-end parking on both sides.
It's fairly minimal, as I understand it.
Yeah, not a lot.
It's about two a day.
We're just waiting for the citation forms to come in and switch to real ones.
And then pet data, what's the first time we've gone to an outside source to actually take care of our pet registrations? They can take care of everything for us. And so revenue source is at $4,892 so far this fiscal year.
Most importantly, the number of animals registered is up. That's what you were trying to get to.
I did want to touch on the tree mitigation, park development and park dedication fees. So if you'll remember from Council retreat, we had a discussion about how those were always in our capital project funds, and we didn't put those as part of the budget discussion. So we're moving those to kind of go through the general fund from now on. And so even though I'm not adding that money right now at mid-year, you will see that supplemental appropriation at the end of the year that accounts for all of the fees that we've generated this fiscal year. You'll see it as a revenue into the general fund, and you'll see it as a transfer out of the general fund and into parks, capital projects, three different projects in the three different sources. So that's something you'll see by the end of the year. We did go ahead and move all of the unappropriated balances from prior years over into the current capital projects. So we moved $470,000 in park development or dedication fees and another million dollars, a little over a million dollars in tree mitigation. So those are in the projects now and ready for us to reallocate and use whenever we have a project that needs that funding. And so that was it on the general fund revenues. Again, it looks fairly healthy and no real concerns. On the expenditure side, we started with an $86 million budget. And December, you actually approved the supplemental appropriation to carry over our purchase orders from the prior fiscal year. So that increased the budget to 86.9 million. At this point in time, we can estimate a savings for the end of the year of about $459,000 in the general fund. So that would result in an estimated end-of-year expenditure budget of 86.4 million, which is less than 1% over the original budget. So with bringing all those purchase orders over, being able to increase it by just less than 1% is a pretty good savings for the general fund. And almost all of that is salary savings again. I think $440,000 of it is salary savings. So we're pretty close on the other estimates. We do have two positions in this general fund that were added during the fiscal year. One of them is the parking enforcement officer that we just talked about for Old Town. The other one is the multi-generational center manager. We aren't asking for any funding for that position in the current budget, but we would like to go ahead and get authorization to proceed with that as if we're going to fund it next year, so that we can get everything lined up, marketing, and get the job description out and everything, so that Stacy can get somebody on board as quickly as possible after October 1st, when we would fund that position. So this is just an administrative approval rather than funding.
Yeah, normally I don't ask to do that until you guys have approved the budget and I know exactly what's going to be in it. So sometimes we'll start recruitment in late August because I've already done that with you and I know what's approved. But this particular position, you've got to build this position. I've got to put it in the budget because you've got a new center that's going to be coming online.
We can't just automate this? Just store cards and...
I've got Chris working on it. He's working on it. So anyway, so we would like to begin with recruitment without it being funded, which is an unusual request.
So that was it for the utility fund highlights, and I'll go into the utility fund unless you have any questions for me. The utility fund, we are projected to end of the year in revenue above the original budget by $1.4 million. The water revenue is trending up 2%, which is an increase of $379,000. And that source of revenue amounts to about $18 million every year. Sewer service is estimated to end the year at 4%, which equates to $459,000. That's on the $11.6 million budget each fiscal year. Capital recovery, we estimate it a bit more aggressively this year. We felt certain that the projects that we had in the pipeline were going to materialize, and they have. So we are still estimating over what we budgeted, but it's a little bit closer than sometimes you see at mid-year because we were a little bit more aggressive in those estimates this year. So we're increasing an estimate $199,000 above the $2.4 million we budgeted. And all other revenue sources are up or within the realm of what we budgeted on budget. On expenditures, everything that's expected to come in right at or below budget expenditures, including salaries, there's no real savings in this fund this fiscal year. We are asking for a supplemental appropriation right now. One of two, the main one is $93,000 to replace some equipment that has no longer working. So we need it now rather than waiting in the budget until the next fiscal year. So we went ahead and included that as a budget request. And then we have a smaller $1,498 one, which has to do with prepaid accounts. So if our departments actually pay for something in advance of when we receive it, sometimes we get credit for doing that, we get discounts for doing that. So we do that. But if it comes in in the next fiscal year, our governmental accounting standards require us to book that expense in the year that it comes in rather than the year that it was paid. So you see that savings in the prior fiscal year, but you see the expense hitting the current fiscal year, and we just need to move the budget forward to account for that. So it's really just a financial transaction. All planned transfers to our CIP are anticipated to be done as we had planned in our budget. The Hotel Motel Fund is anticipated to come in over original projections by $32,000 at $2.5 million. That's a 1% increase. Per council direction, at the end of the fiscal year, any arts cap funding that's available under our 15% cap is transferred to a public arts capital project. We made that transfer at the end of September, and that was $102,000. There is now a balance in that capital project of $772,000. We are anticipating the 1819 transfer to only be $28,000, and that's because we budgeted more originally to spend. So it was $23,000, but thanks to the increase here, it went up a little bit for our estimated end-of-year transfer. The drainage fund, revenue to date is in the amount of $1.3 million, has been billed, which equates to about $331,000 a month. If you times that by nine months that we'll have collected, it's really about $2.9 million. But we're going to estimate $2.2 at this point, just because of the newness of the fee. We really don't know if there will still be any more appeals or credit applications. We've had 15 appeals and two credit applications processed. And I know, I think Keith said we've had over 100 phone calls on the fee, but most of those people understand it and go on and pay the fee. And so that's kind of what we've had so far this fiscal year in terms of appeals and credits.
Now, all of those appeals have been resolved at the department level. Only one has actually come to me.
So on the expenditure side, there was a transfer out to the CIP and an equal amount of the revenue. And so at the end of the year, you'll see a supplement that'll match whatever that revenue is, just so that we can move it over to CIP and have it ready for any drainage projects we have in the pipeline. On the 4B fund, the only thing we're asking here is kind of just, it's not really a request. It's just an informative thing that we've realized in the 4B financial plan recently that we are able to sell certificates of obligation for the entire amount of the nature center project in the future years. Originally, we had thought we'd have about $16 million available. Turns out, we'll have $20 million available that we can sell in 2021 and 2223 if, in fact, we decide to go forward with the nature center. I know part of that is still could change. So right now, we had budgeted $2 million out of 4B cash this current fiscal year for the nature center. And then instead of letting that sit there and ride and then sell that later, we decided it would be more beneficial to the Parks Department if we could go ahead and reallocate that $2 million into more timely projects. So what you see here is an allocation based on kind of Stacy's thoughts and needs and Donna's approval preliminarily. To move $50,000 to the Valley Vista property, this would begin the design of the property and will help us when we go to try and get grants for that development of the property.
As for direction out of retreat.
So kayak launch out at Hebron, we need another $400,000 for just that location, and that would help us get that done this fiscal year. The possible multi-generational center add alternatives of $910,000, we're going to put that in the MGC project if we have the ability, once the bids are received, to go ahead and fund those adds, those alternatives, we will do so. That includes the Northeast Plaza and the ultimate parking of that. So being able to fund that in its entirety would be great. So we're going to set that and see.
Stacy, we're fairly close to getting those bids.
Yes, ma'am. If the estimates are on target at this point, we figure that's about what we'll be short with contingencies that will be available at the time of bid opening and what our OPCC is for those two add-ons at this point in time.
That would allow us to build the entire project.
The master plan.
The master plan project. If you remember, you saw that in phases earlier.
I might mention too, on that kayak launch, we had 1.7 originally budgeted, so that's going to bring that budget to 2.1 million, just to refresh your memory on that. On the hedgerick house, we have some erosion occurring behind the hedgerick house that's letting some of our soil wash away, and they really need to go in and shore that up and replace the turf there, and that's a cost of $50,000.
That will also include the Timber Creek properties that we...
Of the new Timber Creek properties that we just purchased as part of the flooding mitigation grant. And then the park program, cost analysis of $49,000. This is the cost of bringing in a third party to really look at our fee structure and to think about cost recovery, bring us some options and thoughts on that that we will eventually bring to you for your consideration. We want to get that in place before the MGC opens to make sure we're pricing that out competitively and where we want to be as a council. So we're going to go ahead and get started on that this fiscal year to make sure we have it done in time. And then future parkland acquisition, small area plan implementation, we're not sure exactly what that small area plan implementation will entail, but we know it's going to need funding. So we want to set that aside, as well as some Valley Vista property development in case we need it there. So we're moving the rest of that $541,000 to kind of that project to sit and wait and see what we need, knowing that we're going to need something in all of those areas.
So council thoughts on any of those changes? Of course, freeing up that money we set aside for the nature center, a lot of that was due to we pushed the project out. So the project would have been earlier. We continue to work with our partners and are making real progress. So I'm hoping that the new target dates will work for all the partners. Issues, questions?
Looks good. Excited to see that kayak launch get handled.
Me too. Muscles have been taken care of, and so we're working through the last bits of the documents so that we can bid them out early this summer. I'm praying for no rain.
The residents will be very excited to see that kayak launch.
So that was really kind of the highlights of some of the major funds. But when you look at all the funds in their entirety on the operating side, we have a citywide revenue increase of $4.6 million so far estimated for the end of the fiscal year. The expenditures are increasing $3.4 million. And again, most of that is a prepaid expense for a fire truck. That is $1.2 million, just one little item.
Thank you very much.
Always the part of it.
And purchase order carry others that you've already approved at 1.9 million. So when you put those into context, there's really not a lot of other increases. The estimated fund balance impact, after we've done everything that we've just talked about on these funds, we're still looking at contributing another 1.1 million above what we thought we would for the end of the fiscal year. And of course, we'll continue to monitor all the expenditures closely in all funds. So now we'll do a quick status update on the items that you approved during the budget process. The sanitaryian and the BSI Online was for our backflow testing. That allows them to administer that backflow testing program for us. We've put that into place. Since approval of the program, we've actually gone up from a 70% compliance rate to over 92%. And that's based on actually freeing up the time from our staff of doing the actual administering of the backflow testing to really just going out and working with the problem corporations and businesses that we needed to kind of touch more frequently. We also had $567,000 approved for streets and sidewalk maintenance. That's made a total of $1.3 million that we contributed to streets and sidewalks, to sidewalks, and $4.5 million for just streets this fiscal year. So that's making a huge impact. I wanted to show you this capital improvement project dashboard that we've recently been able to start tracking some CIP. You'll notice the biggest line there is street sidewalks construction at $113 million. So I just wanted you to see other projects that are in place right now. The bulk of them are streets and sidewalks. That does include the $50 million for corporate and still has the $20 million for Valley Ridge that isn't quite closed. So those two projects in itself account for more than half of that. But just so you know that that's kind of how our projects are breaking down, and we are in process with 119 current capital projects. The facilities maintenance technician and the facilities crew leader were both funded. You can see from this new facilities org chart, we have, I don't know, this crew leader and this crew leader enable them to break into two different districts and each have four positions. One of them is a part-time here. That they're over, and that is working really well in the public services department. I think Francis is very happy with the new addition set he got. They've been filled for quite a while and working out great. The interpretive park ranger has also been hired. We've also purchased or ordered all of the associated equipment that you approved, including some promotional items to assist with marketing Lila. So that is going well. The bodywork camera technician has been filled. If you'll remember, the increase in digital storage and ability to analyze that digital evidence has made that position necessary for us to implement the project. The CAD system is ongoing. The replacement of the CAD system is ongoing. They have a CAD selection committee that's been looking at demos and trying to select a vendor, and I think they hope to have that selected by the end of July. The traffic light network refresh is the project or the study that Chris and Keith are working on. Connectivity David, I guess, is working on that. They have a plan to select a firm this week, and so I think they're pretty close to getting that done and starting that study this fiscal year. And we'll have a better idea of what we're going to need to fund in next year's budget maybe if they can get further along in their study. We have filled the instrumentation and controls technician in the utility fund, which is great for our infrastructure maintenance. They work with impulse and a lot of the maintenance out at the plants, and being able to analyze the condition of that infrastructure is going to be great for our, not only our performance dashboard, but our plans for maintenance improvements in the utility system. And then that $60,000 was part of the park art, the public art master plan. They had a kickoff, kind of a big kickoff project to launch our city's public art program. And what they decided to recommend to the park, to the art advisory board this next week will be something related to Main and Mill project. And so that's going to kind of coincide with the timing of the construction of that project. So we may not see it this fiscal year, but we do have the funding set aside for it. And once it's approved, it'll come to you for your approval, and then we'll get started on it as soon as Main and Mill gets to that point in time where we can add some art to that project. I don't know how to say that. It's a chariote.
Okay.
That special event is scheduled for Saturday, May 26 at the Louisville Rodeo Arena. So hopefully it'll be an exciting new special event. Third-party backup inspection services, this was funding that we set aside to help our inspectors when they actually go to training or are off for whatever reason. They weren't able to get the inspections done that they needed to be getting done in a timely manner. And so they just weren't going to training and weren't doing the things that they needed to do. So this enabled them to do that. However, they're still working through that contract, and I hope to have that in place by the end of this week, actually. So I'm hoping that they can get that started soon. The status update on the pedestrian bridges. This one shows here, this is where one of the bridges is. Here's where the other one. And phase one includes the sidewalk in between them. We also only do the sidewalks that continue under I-30, or 121. Is this 121? Yeah. So that you'll have connectivity throughout. This part will be a separate phase. If you'll remember, we budgeted $450,000 here. We had $350,000 from developer escrows. And we also have a little bit of funding from our annual street sidewalks money that we can pitch in here to help with these trails and sidewalks. However, we're going to be a little bit short. I think the entire thing is 1.35 million, and we have right at $790,000 right now plus a little bit from we can find in the sidewalks. So.
So we'll see any requests next fiscal?
Yeah, to finish out this plan. Timber Creek Erosion Phase Two, this project is on track for 60% completion of their design plans in May. That's when the staff will be, start meeting with the residents. That'll be affected by that Timber Creek Erosion Project.
This is your first project that will be funded in storm weather. You're going to refund it at a general fund. You can reverse.
The cybersecurity audit, unfortunately, we reallocated that, and we aren't doing that cybersecurity audit right now, but hopefully we'll be able to find some funding before the end of the year to reinstate that. We needed to perform the payment card industry assessment on the locations where we currently accept credit card payments, and that RFQ has been awarded. It looks like it'll take about six months for us to get through that process, though. The live burn tower for the fire department was approved at $200,000 for design. They've been working with the Colony as a partner. They have interviews have been conducted, and they've selected BRW as the architectural firm for this tower. What I want you to remember is we don't have construction money funded for this at all. We don't even have an idea of the construction funding for this. So once we know the design and who our partners are, we can maybe go after some grants, and we can look at where we can get funding for the construction. So you'll see that in upcoming budget years, but it's not something funded.
Colony, we've had meetings with them, and they're very supportive. So I feel confident that they'll be a good partner for us.
Is there any partnership opportunity with NCTC now that they're growing there?
I've had some conversation with them, and I think it's unlikely based on the conversation that, Carrie, have you heard anything differently?
The $111,000 that we funded analytics and GIS part-time interns, those GIS, the GIS intern was filled right away and has been happy. The analytics interns have had a little bit more turnover. It's kind of hit or miss on the interns that we get that are able to do the type of work we want related to our dashboard and accessing the data out of our databases. And so they kind of have a little bit more turnover right now. We just had one that just started, and we have a vacancy in one. Hopefully, they'll get those on board and back to work fairly quickly. The residential plans examiner has come on board and made life a lot easier for our other plans examiner. And so I think that one's been filled most of the fiscal year. We have the library and for the Makerspace is on board. The Makerspace is set to open on May 22, so they're busy getting everything finalized and ready for that grand opening. The agenda workflow software and vote casting system has been purchased and installed, and we've had training on it. So it is scheduled to start being in use maybe in June. We're going to do some trial where we do it the old way and the new way for a couple of agendas to make sure we kind of work out the bugs. And then we'll start using that probably June, maybe July.
Hopefully the first meeting in July.
The library books order, this is a huge item. That was $131,000, but it did come in under budget. It's one of the few things that ever do that. So wanted to make sure we made that point. But also, it takes about four to five months to build because they build it custom for the city of Louisville and how we sort books and how our library operates. So that's kind of a longer timeline to get it installed and in the library than we would have originally envisioned. So the Makerspace, again, is scheduled to open May 22. I think you're all aware of the Hive. Looks great if you haven't been to our studio yet. The spatialization, if you'll remember, we did a allocation to study basically the layout of our buildings and see how we could do a little bit better job of mushing people in there because we're running out of room in a couple of our facilities.
And we're getting lots of requests from the departments.
Lots of requests for changes and adding buildings and just modifications to get people wherever we could get them. And so we started an RFP process, and we've selected a vendor who is Park Hill Smith and Cooper, and they're a great company. We've really been impressed with them so far. We have worked out the cost with them. It's a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. So again, we're going to have to phase it. We budgeted $100,000. We're probably going to spend closer to $150,000. But it will include the municipal annex complex, which includes that whole footprint of haring, the police station, the fire station, the municipal annex, as well as Keighley, and looking out at all of Keighley on the site plans and figuring out how our buildings are located and where they might be better served in the future. So it is a little bit more of a project than we'd originally anticipated. But I think it'll give us a lot of projections that we need for the next 15 years or so. Future land purchase, we did set aside $600,000 for a building if one were to become available close to the Visper's Information Center, and we have that ready if it does. And we've also set aside funds for the future fleet building and basement remodel. The fleet building, we have scheduled for 2023, so we're putting money aside every year, including the utility fund as well as the general fund. And the basement remodel, we currently have scheduled for 2025. So we're just going to kind of keep letting those funds accumulate until we have enough funding there. The Diamond Bright Sun Valley Competition, leaves during top pools, was moving it from a painted shell to a plaster shell, and that's been completed. The update and replacement of irrigation parts in our irrigation system for the Parks Department is underway. They've done several quotes and for different irrigation components are in process of awarding those areas quotes. We added $110,000 for police and fire training, $80,000 for the police department, and $30 for the fire department. You can tell here I've listed kind of everything they've been able to do so far this fiscal year with that training, and it amounts to a lot. I was really impressed that they've been able to do as much as they have. In the past, they've had to kind of scrounge around for that money and do what they could where they got it. So this made their, like, a lot easier for the training for the police and the fire. This perimeter fence, the $300,000 there, you can see that it's, when you drive by there, you can see that it's almost done. We still need to put in the gates. I don't know if those are in yet.
Not yet.
And the landscaping, that will soften the look a little bit, but I think it looks really great. And then before the end of the fiscal year, they'll be installing that bullet resistant glass on the east side.
And those poles will be kept.
It looks a little funky.
In the side lane.
Yeah, we won't leave that. We won't fix that. The three captains SUVs have all been ordered and are in service except for one where it's currently getting the equipment installed. And again, these police cars have as much equipment as they do just a basic package. So that takes a little bit of time to get them through the process. The license plate recognition system, hoping we're going to enter that purchase order this week and get that ordered. The unmarked cavers for the street crimes unit have all been ordered and are in service except for the one that is currently being outfitted and open as well. This $150,000 increase funding for custodial service contract, we did have a budget of $300,000. We increased it to $450,000, and we did award the bid for $428,000. I think Public Services has been happy with the work that we've been getting, and they've made some sustainability improvements, as well as they actually have this handy-dandy work order system that makes it a little bit easier for us to let them know when they aren't meeting our expectations or to monitor kind of what they're doing. Keith, I was looking behind.
Mary is. Let's see if you had any comments. They seem to be doing much better than a prior.
Yeah, it's been a transition. They started the first of April, and the first couple of weeks it was rocky. We had a number of issues come up as they were getting accustomed to it. But the last couple of weeks, they've really, they're fully staffed. They've got, I believe, 16 people here every day. Actually, that's just their night cleaning crew. They still have two day porters on staff as well.
So Mayor, you have about 20 minutes left in here. Do you want to break and look at the agenda and then?
So let's get the agenda, walk through the agenda. Okay, we'll start off with the invitation by Deputy Mayor Porter and John. Then the pledges to the flags by Councilman Ferguson. The graduation of the Citizens University, Donna C. Julie, in my second. Then the full proclamations by Deputy Mayor St. Jim Jones. Going down to consent, Adam Warren.
So this public hearing, Mayor, I might go back to that. We are continuing that again.
Did I miss anything?
Yeah, we have a public hearing. We are asking to continue that to June 4. This is your authority cap overlay district.
Yes.
And Richard continues to be challenged by a few developers that have lots of issues. So it's best that he continue to work with them and work through those issues.
I've seen Richard work if there's anything that might have been to do with you.
Okay. Did I miss anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent, Adam Warren. Adam Warren.
This item is something I'm really personally excited about. So Tom went out and got the UAW grant in the amount of $65,000, which will cover the cost of this full-scale emergency planning exercise, which is the first one that I think we've done in about 15 years. So it's something we badly needed to do, and I think it's going to be very, very beneficial. As the mayor and I were talking today, he said it's not, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen.
What was the dollar amount again?
The contract's actually $58,000. The UAW grant is $65,000.
Okay. Yeah, it, we've been doing that. Adam Warren. Adam Warren. Adam Warren.
This is the item related to the mid-year that we're just going through before now.
Regular hearing, Adam Warren. Adam Warren. Adam Warren. Any comments on the outcome? And then we're going to do the reports then, go back into the closed session before we go into executive session.
So we probably will want, if we don't finish up here, and I'm sure we will not, she'd go through your regular, then come back into workshop and let us finish. Gina will have more on the mid-year report, and then David has a section on capital planning. I'd like to give you a street update, and then we'll go into executive. I'd like to give you a street update, and then we would go into executive.
So we're going to go to closed session, executive session. After we do the last thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go back into the.
Finish this one real quick. Okay, so the energy star rated roof repairs have already been completed. There was one at wastewater, two at the water treatment plant, fire station four, there was a storage room at the fire, central fire station, and then three of those classrooms out at Lila needed roof repairs, and those have all already been done this fiscal year. The city hall exterior wall mortar and joint ceiling, the parapet wall recoding is all complete except for the little owls that are inhabiting our wall. So we cannot and do not want to displace them until the mama leaves with the babies. So they're still there.
We need an owl cam.
I follow that owl.
The park maintenance building, painting, flooring, and structural problems have been corrected. The flooring and cabinetry work is scheduled to be complete by the end of May. This picture is of the new, not new building, but the fleet building with the new flooring and the paints. Their work is complete there. We have replaced all of the not, the NA means they're not assigned vehicles that Public Services uses primarily in the facilities area. We've replaced all of the F-250s with Colorado's, which are a lot smaller vehicles. We replaced one van with another van that was a lot smaller and it was really cool looking, but it's, they're either hybrids or a lesser engine. The storm sewer inspection funding, if you'll remember, last fiscal year, we funded that, and we didn't have near enough to actually do the work, and so this year we funded the remaining, and it's so important for us to be able to assess the condition of our storm sewer pipes, so that's good to have funded. And then the last, no, the second to the last is the inception LED lighting for City Hall and the Grand Theater, which is for your holiday lighting as well as a new special event. That's all been installed on both buildings and is ready to use. Lastly, we have the meter changeout program. Our staff is currently finalizing the IRFP for that, and that will go out this summer. And if you'll remember, we've moved this to a seven-year program, so you'll see this every year for the next year. So that was all we had on the status updates. Do you have any questions on those?
Will we get a copy of this slide deck?
We can, you want it too.
Do I ask him? Of course, I knew what you answered.
Okay, so then the supplemental appropriations we have by fund is the 95,000 that we discussed on the utility fund side for the equipment replacements, as well as those prepaid expenditures. We have 37,000 in the general fund also related to prepaid expenditures primarily for the charter election, software maintenance costs, and training that was prepaid and then actually conducted in the current fiscal year. The main appropriation in the general fund is related to the additional locations for mid-block flashing crosswalks. We have 12 crossings at eight different locations here, Garden Ridge, Valley Ridge, Old Orchard, Summit, Bel Air, Lake Park, and Main Street. This will fund everything needed for the actual crosswalk, as well as the ADA improvements that are needed for that area as well.
So you say that these are the flashing crosswalks? Are these like the ones here in Old Town, or are they even brighter like the ones in Flower Round that basically, you know, for like a week later, I'm staggered?
Well, we have a swath of specific equipment, but I mean, it's basically same thing.
Are they electric powered, or can they do solar on the battery now?
Some, yeah, solar.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
We also have a supplemental request in the grant fund. This accounts for the entire grant that we're receiving. When we get a whole grant, we still have to appropriate it so that we have the authority to spend it and then get reimbursed by the grant. So that's what this $40,000 allows us to do. That's a great grant to help us achieve the 10-minute walk to a park grant, so we're all excited about that.
Stacy, you have anything?
About the grant? Yeah, we're excited, the commitment that y'all made back in September to become part of the 10-minute walk to a park for every residence, and then thereby following up with that being a major goal for us in our master plan. Ended up with us being awarded one of 12 grants throughout the nation, and we had a phone call with the NRPA. They said ours was one of the, if not the best submitted, and that was, stood testament to y'all's commitment to a quality park system, that everybody in town has access to it, and the work we've been doing with reaching out to communities like the Chin community and the Latino community. So they were very impressed and are excited about offering us some planning assistance for making sure that goal comes true.
We do need a supplemental in the four-beat fund. Some of the, you might have noticed, some of the trees in the plaza have died. Part of that is due to the, you know, Stacy, you can talk about this more than I can.
Sure. So the sycamore trees are really struggling in Wayne Ferguson Park, and it was a combination of a couple of things. One, those are very large trees that are meant to have a lot of space to grow, and they were clustered pretty closely in the initial design. And then also, the black basalt rock that was prescribed out there is, while gorgeous, not very conducive to a healthy root system for a tree that is large and also doesn't have great drainage underneath it. So we made the decision to move away from the basalt rock in the immediate area where these trees were planted, and you'll see we did it. We installed a flexi-pave, which is not only pervious to allow water to go through, it's not as hot, but it's also a lot easier to walk across during events out there. For those of us that wear flip flops, a lot appreciated.
It's a blessing.
Yeah, and we're saving a lot of staff time not having to sweep that rock back into place, so we made those changes, and I think it's a prescription we'll start to look at in a lot more areas.
So we had $10,000 that we came up with within the existing budget, but the total cost is 36,000, so we're asking for 26,000 to do that. Then again, the supplemental appropriation to the Fire Services District Fund for the prepaid, beautiful fire truck that we got. The last supplement here is 477,000, and this is just, again, a financial transaction where we originally budgeted for the revenue from the assessments to go into an administration fund and be transferred out to a capital project. We've decided now that our accounting leaders say it's okay to move it directly into a capital project and not have to go into an administrative fund originally, so we're just going to start doing that. This is a cleanup one time that you'll see us do this. I didn't mention health and risk, but those are always precarious, and we don't really have a great way to estimate when somebody's going to become ill or have some type of claim, so we use our best guess. We use our trend analysis, and right now, we're holding firm to where we are on budget estimates, but by the end of the year, that could be dramatically different. So we will come back with you by the end of the fiscal year and let you know for sure how the fiscal year ends and if we need a supplement at that time. So that's all I had on the mid-year report. Do I have any questions?
No questions. Just get a copy of the slide deck. I'll mark your questions later.
So David will provide a review of the street projects. You've got about 10 minutes, so we'll go on and queue him up, so that once we get to seven, the council can just move, and Mayor will continue to lead him on moving to the brother session.
I want to do this rather quickly, so just stop me if you've got a question or anything. The first project shown here is actually a continuation of Valley Ridge. I think we spoke with you a couple of months ago about the great problem we have at intersection of Mill and Valley Ridge. That intersection was not included in the original project. To exacerbate that problem, our contractor did make a small grade bust in that intersection as well. So we've estimated 250,000 to repair that intersection so that it has the, you know, grades that are, you know, will cause people to bottom out or scream. We're estimating about 77,000 of that is going to come from the contractor, and that leaves 173,000 for the city to cover the major intersection. Let's just picture the intersection problems. Old Town, you know, it's a major mill project. We're on a course to bid that project here within the next week or two weeks. We've got our final plans. We're just going over the last set of plans and putting the finals touches on our bid documents. Right now, we've got right at the correct amount of funding, at least based on our estimates, 5.9 million dollars. And you'll see when we go through all these slides, that we've added the estimates for underground utilities, as we discussed during the council meeting. And we, assuming that it's come in at least close to what we estimated, you know, we should be able to begin construction in August. And it just made it, and hopefully it'll be a lot different when we get this done. Timberbrook subdivision rehab, right now, we're estimating about 14.7 million dollars. We've got just a little bit over 15 available, so right now, we're in good shape on that project. We're finishing up the 60% design plans right now, working with one of the neighborhood representatives out there to locate a spot for our resident meeting, and hopefully we'll be setting that up within the next couple of weeks. The subdivision is really in bad shape. I could have shown 100 pictures of, you know, a lot of cracking, patches, areas where the water settles because the street has sunk in, bad retaining walls, bad sidewalks, everything. Holkas Prairie Road. We've just started preliminary engineering. We did a preliminary design report first rather than jumping straight into the design. The whole area down by Midway Branch Creek is a area that we've come to construct. The road's going to have to be elevated quite a bit to get it up the floodplain. It's going to affect access to Mobile Home Park on the east side, as well as the Old Tree Lane subdivision on the west side. As a matter of fact, probably they have to buy a considerable amount of right-of-way property to make that work. The cost estimate is 6.6 million dollars for this project. Right now, we've got a little bit over 7 million dollars available, and with inflation and uncertain costs for right-of-way, you know, we probably need that 7 million dollars plus. That's just the way the road looks today, you know, asphalt, two-lane, no curb and gutter, roadside ditches. This is the drainage area down where the bridge would go. This is where the creek is down here at the very bottom, according to the Mobile Home Park. And during, in the last 12 or 13 years that I've been here, that road has been underwater sometimes. North Mill Street, you'll recall that originally this project involved some of the residential streets up north, and we dropped those with the construction inflation we've been experiencing. We've kept North Mill Street, and we're going to be doing concrete street section, but no curb and gutter, and it's going to have a directional bike lane on each side. There's some drainage work involved with this project, and of course, on replacing utilities. And we're going to have to sell some additional bonds, roughly a little bit over $1 billion to make this project viable. See here, one of the problems that's happening on North Mill Street, hey, you can see we've got some stuff stained with driveway culverts out there, and the roadside gets fairly shallow. And what happens in several homes out there is that ditch spills up because it can't get under the driveways, and then when it spills over the edge of the ditch, yards slope down toward the houses, and we have several houses out there that get water in them. Our Midway Road project, it's going to be about 5.33 million. That's roughly the amount of money that we have. The project is 100% designed. Some of you probably noticed there's already construction out there. We're building a 24-inch water line that's under the road, and we have to get that waterline completed before we can build the road project. So as soon as the waterline project is a little bit further along, we'll be bidding Midway Road. And this, you can see on the second picture, that our waterline construction, we've got there down to one lane westbound between I-44 and Holkas Prairie Road. This is just the offset intersection that we're going to fix when we build Midway Road. You can see this is late afternoon, so there's quite a bit of traffic, and that's going to work so much better once we get that straightened out. Our McKenzie-Hemery project, we've had to reduce the number of streets. We're doing, basically, we're doing Hemery and McKenzie, and then Red Bud, and then the little skeet street down in the south end. These streets are going to be curb and gutter, concrete. They're probably going to be a little bit narrower than our normal street sections because we're trying to avoid purchasing additional right-of-like. Cost estimate is 3.6 million dollars, and we've got right out of all 3.6 available. And these streets are in pretty bad shape, a lot of cracking. In fact, you know, Red Bud Street is really in bad shape. It's almost, you know, a solid patch. Northwest Old Town, we've been able to resurrect this project. We've got a new engineer project manager onboard, and she's picked that up, and then we're moving forward with it again. We've got a cost estimate of 6.6 million dollars. We're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to sell some additional bonds to make this project work out and be fully funded, but we're working on 30% plans now, and we'll be having a neighborhood meeting once we get those in shape. One of the things I wanted to mention was, you know, we dropped Adma Street, I think it was last year when we were discussing the escalations. And we dropped Adma Street. I just wanted to give you a visual of why we did that. If you look at Richland Street and the condition that Richland Street is in compared to Adma Street, Adma Street is wider, it's much smoother. You can see there's not near as much patch and traffic going on out there, so we felt that that street could probably last for a while. West Collin Street, this originally went from I-35 to Mill. We reduced it down from Collin to Mill. We've got our estimate of 2.8 million dollars. We think this is adequately funded for the time being. One of the things we've done since we had our neighborhood meeting several months ago is we've added some curb bump outs at the intersections in some selected locations to help address some of the speeding problems that were identified during the resident meeting.
Why don't we stop here, Mayor?
Yeah. We'll start back at just before the report. At 7 o'clock, call the meeting to order. We do have a forum present. First item is the invocation by Deputy Mayor Protem Jones. There he is. Followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Ferguson.
Please stand for a moment of silent contemplation.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God. Our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you.
Graduation of the, uh, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Louisville Citizens University members. I have a few comments before we get started on it. One of the more difficult challenges any city faces is how to educate its residents about what the city does and how the city functions. Let's be honest, city operations are not always a world of excitement. But having residents who are educated and engaged in important, is important for a city that wants to pursue a vision. Members of the Louisville twenty twenty-five committee spent a good bit of time talking about ways to improve in that area. One key recommendation included in the Louisville twenty twenty-five vision plan was to create a citizens university. Tonight, I am proud to recognize the third group of residents to complete the Louisville Citizens University. These fifteen men and women have met twelve times over the past twelve, excuse me, uh, past ten months to learn about many different facets of their city. As Citizens University worked the way it was intended in the Louisville twenty twenty-five vision plan, our graduates can tell you themselves about how much they have learned and how much better they understand their city. What I can tell you is that of the twenty-seven already graduated citizen university members, eleven have been appointed to the city council, by the city council to serve on city boards, and one is now Deputy Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you.
So from, from my perspective, it's working better than anyone could have hoped. The next class starts up in the fall and I encourage any resident wanting to learn more about their city to consent her signing up. And Julie, let's call the city secretary's office. Okay, thank you. And now, Julie, let's go down.
I'm gonna read what the certificates all say, um, one time for all of you. These certificates are awarded to these members and I'm glad you're all here. And I want to acknowledge too, our first two groups are also, um, present tonight, so thank you all for coming to welcome, um, the new graduates. The certificates read, "In recognition of your commitment to completing the Louisville Citizens University comprehensive curriculum, your participation in this leadership development and community education program demonstrates your interest in municipal government services, operations, and decision-making processes. This accomplishment displays your community pride and spirit. With respect and appreciation, the Louisville City Council and staff seek your continued participation in civic affairs. By the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, I have issued this honor on the seventh day of May twenty eighteen. Signed, Mayor Rudy Durham." So our first, um, first one is Dosselin McMurray. Deanna Perkins.
And we are gonna have time for pictures over here, uh, after we give all the awards out.
Kathy Folkenberry.
There's a little ramp there.
Eric Page.
Christine Curda. Jim Astine.
There's two of these members, I'm not even gonna try their last name, so Scholastica.
How do you say your last name?
Winobi. Laura Griffin. Kevin Grubbs. Kathy Mullane. Marcela Borz. Nika. I told you first, what's the second one I wasn't saying? And Jacqueline Reed. I just wanna make sure we got everybody, right? All right, did I, did I call you up there? Okay, come on up, we'll see, we'll find where she's got it.
I probably missed it.
No, you didn't. I'm just gonna make sure Sharon Wood's not here also. This is your twenty seventeen graduating citizens university. Can we all have lunch together and then take a picture with the mayor, please?
We can get two rows.
Hike disadvantage in front.
All right, and three, two, one, and three, two, one. All right, thank you, guys.
Congratulations to the latest class. We appreciate all the work and effort that you guys put in and we also, I wanna appreciate the staff because they put a lot of time in to help, help out with this. And now for proclamations. Our first proclamation is Louisville Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Do you have anybody there, here for that? Come on down. I'm gonna read the proclamation and then we will, uh, I will watch and say afterwards. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Louisville. And whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and family places upon our community is a critical responsibility. And whereas where only fifty percent of Denton County's children and adolescents receive needed mental treat, health treatment. Whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. Whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team in partnership with the United Way of Denton County, Denton County M H, MR Center, and Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook's Children's, through their preventative, preventative-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, and on behalf of the City, Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim, May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, Louisville Children's Mental Health Awareness Day.
Thank you so much. Uh, we are so appreciative, um, United Way of Denton County, uh, serving as the backbone support for, uh, the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team. And I appreciate, uh, Chief Curbo's, um, representation on the team and, as well as, um, Councilman Gilmore. One in five Denton residents experiences a mental health condition. We're looking at a hundred sixty-seven thousand, um, community members here in Denton County. And the statistic is the same for children. Um, one in five children will experience a mental health condition sometime in their life. And so it, it is so important that, um, we are raising awareness and we appreciate this opportunity to do so. And, um, hopefully, we'll continue to do that through the Behavioral Health Leadership Team and our collaboration with the Watch Coalition, so that, um, it's not just one day that we're thinking about mental health, we're thinking about it, um, every day of the year. Thanks.
Our next block proclamation is for National Police Week and Police Memorial Day. Chief Curbo. Whereas there are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated men of the Louisville Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas three hundred sixty new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including one hundred and twenty-nine officers killed in twenty seventeen and two hundred and thirty-one officers killed in the previous years. Whereas more officers were killed in the line of duty in Texas, twelve, than any other state in twenty fifteen. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the fallen officers and their families and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty eighteen, as National Police Week and May fifteenth as Police Memorial Day. You know, it's a shame nationwide that we have to have a day or a week like this to commemorate those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Nevertheless, we appreciate the council and mayor for your continued support for law enforcement and our men and women in blue and on behalf of them, we thank you. Our next proclamation, Building Safety Month. Do you have anybody here for that? Whereas our city's effort to address the issues of safety, energy, efficiency, and water conservation give us confidence that our structures are safe. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of the dedicated members of the International Code Council. Whereas Building Safety Month, sponsored by the International Code Council, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety, and con, conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local, state, building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies protecting our lives and property. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty eighteen, as Building Safety Month.
Thank you.
Short sweep. All right, uh, public work, there's National Drinking Water and National Public Works Week. Do we have a person to? Keith? Come on up here, guys. Proclamation, whereas water is a basic and essential need to all humankind and all living things to sustain life. Whereas water is a limited resource that should be used wisely and the water supply protected by preventing pollution and covering wa, and conserving water. Whereas public works and utilities provide essential services needed for the protection of health and the welfare of our community as a part of their everyday lives. And whereas the support of a satisfied and informed citizenry is vital to the professional operation of the public works. Utility system and essential programs such as water production and distribution, wastewater treatment and collection, environmental services, streets and storm drainage, traffic and fleet operations, and public buildings and facilities. And whereas the quality and capability of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public service employees, such as these folks here. Whereas the efficiency of qualified and committed personal, personnel who staff the public services department is significantly influenced by the citizens' attitudes and appreciation for the important work they perform. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Louisville, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixth through twelfth, twenty eighteen, National Drinking Wa, National Drinking Water Week and May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, National Public Works Week. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, on behalf of public services, we would like to thank you guys, uh, for this, giving us this today. We'd like to thank the mayor, mayor of Louisville, city council members, the, um, city, uh, manager's office. And, uh, thank you very much, guys, for everything you do, for allowing us to, um, do what we do and, uh, be a safe place to work, great place to work, and offer the citizens. So thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code to add a new chapter, chapter seventeen point five, I thirty-five E corridor overlay district, and amending other chapters to support the new overlay district. The recommendation is that the city council continue the public hearing to the June fourth, twenty eighteen, city council meeting to allow staff additional time for continued educational efforts with stakeholders within the proposed overlay district.
Okay. Councilman first.
Yes, uh, move to continue the public hearing to June fourth, twenty eighteen, city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Visitor, Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor have received no cards?
Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor have received no cards?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item six. Consideration of a resolution nominating a representative and an alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Transportation Council. Both the current representative, Mayor Durham, and alternate representative, Mayor Charlotte Wilcox, have indicated their willingness to serve again. The recommendation is that the city council consider a resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. So we have a resolution?
Like to make a resolution to appoint Mayor Durham as our current representative to, uh, retain that and to, um, have our alternate representative be, uh, Mayor Charlotte Wilcox. Second.
Your second?
Second, yes.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item seven. Consideration of a resolution finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC's application for approval of a distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city of Louisville, city should be denied. Encore is seeking it rates within the city of Louis- City should be denied. Encore is seeking an increase in distribution revenues. The Encore City's Steering Committee intends to engage the services of a consultant to review Encore's filing and identify adjustments that should be made to Encore's request. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. City Manager, do you have any comments on this one?
Mayor and Council, uh, you have always taken a stance, uh, when utility companies have attempted to raise rates, um, latterly and so with that, uh, we do have a, a group of cities that have come together, uh, that will fund, uh, a, a, a suit to look at this, uh, issue, uh, and consider the reasonableness of the rate increase requested.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move, move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we're down to reports. Nikki? Okay.
Mayor and Council, as a reminder, this week is Keeping Tradition Alive. Our opening ceremonies are Thursday at the Hilton Garden Inn. A breakfast is at seven, opening ceremony is at eight fifteen, and then the public concert, which is Friday evening, starting at six. First performance is at seven across the street in the plaza.
Okay, thank you. Russ?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to remind you the next Coffee with Cops is a Saturday event, this time on May nineteenth, from ten to twelve noon at the Jerry R. Goller Training Facility out off of East Valley Ridge Boulevard, used to be called Switch Treatment Plant Road. I'm sure y'all know it. Alabian Army to provide their ca- their coffee canteen out, as well as the local Girl Scout troops. So lots of activities for kids and families to come tour those facilities and have a cup of coffee with us and start the conversation.
Thank you.
Nothing here, Mayor. The lake is about three inches below the conservation pool.
Okay, thank you. Sheena? Nothing?
Nothing, Mayor.
Eric?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Brett?
Uh, I just wanted to, I told Stacy earlier, I was at the event Saturday for the nature event at, uh, Wayne Ferguson Plaza and the park looks fantastic. If you haven't been out there, you should go out there. It looks, looks well manicured, looks almost like a professional football field. Uh, at that event, I became an award-winning council member for winning, uh, for keeping Louisville beautiful, spring clean. I found the most interesting event, which was a wheelless wheelchair at a dump site that we need to take care of.
Okay, TJ?
An additional thank you, um, to Parks Department and the Ten Minute Walk Campaign. That forty thousand dollar grant that we earned, I think, is amazing and is really going to, uh, to help with accessibility throughout our city.
Good. City Manager, huh? Okay. Councilperson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so MCL Grand, uh, we've got, we're coming down to the end of the Texas Tunes series and I want to mention, uh, Tim Phillips' retirement after, how many, thirty-eight years? How long?
One.
Thirty-one. Well, it felt like thirty-eight. No, I don't know. Um, who stepped into the shoes of Jim Ware and continued the Texas Tunes program for a long time. So, we're gonna miss Tim, um, but I think we'll probably see him back from time to time. But getting down towards the end of the series, uh, the next concert is May twelfth, um, and features John Christopher Davis and Daryl Todd, I'm sorry, Daryl Dodd. Uh, we also have art talks at the MCL Grand on May seventh, presented by the Visual Arts League. Uh, KLB is doing another garden secrets class, this one on, uh, You Landscape It, and that's May seventeenth. Uh, we still have the art pop-ups in the plaza on Saturdays and Pilates in the plaza on Thursdays and Saturdays and yoga in the plaza on Wednesdays and as always acoustic jam every Friday presented by the Visual Arts League. Uh, art exhibits currently, Texas Bigger and Boulder opens on May nineteenth at the MCL Grand Main Gallery and Visual Arts League Cell Phone Shots, uh, continues through June ninth in the north corridor. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor? Nothing? Julie?
Just want to, um, let everyone know that based on the unofficial results from the election held, um, on Saturday, we will be calling, City Council will be calling an election, a runoff election for June the sixteenth.
Okay. And thank you for all the work y'all did on Election Day. Uh, and that's all the volunteers and all the ones who worked at the polls and all. So, thank you. Officer? Thanks for your service to the community. And with that, we're gonna go into, we're gonna have a workshop out here back in there. We're gonna go back into the conference room for a workshop, continuation of the workshop, and then we'll come back out for close, after a closed session. Okay, solemnity in order.
But that's Project East Howard Street, that's a project we've added to our list. Uh, this is, uh, Howard Street from Mill Street going back east to Railroad Street by the train station. Uh, we have a three million dollars sustainable development grant from Cott. They have, uh, uh, this, this project will be, will be very similar to the Maiden Mill project in that it's not really a street project per se, it's more of a street skate project, uh, you know, with all the same types of elements, uh, bike lanes, uh, the extra wide sidewalks, uh, street furniture, street trees, uh, all those types of things, decorative crosswalks, things of that nature. Uh, the, the money won't be available till the end of this year, uh, but we are gonna get started, uh, later this summer with, uh, selecting a consultant, uh, project. Just a couple of forms of what it looks like, uh, now. Of course, we do have some bike lanes out there, but, uh, we anticipate having something a little bit more improved.
Um, do you perceive that to have as many, um, issues as, um, with right-of-way and whatnot, or is this a little cleaner project?
I don't, I mean, uh, you know, fortunately out here, we don't have near as many driveways. In fact, there's really very few driveways. There's some driveway issues maybe on the very west end toward Mill Street. And that's not to say we won't have any individual issues, but it shouldn't be as large as we could. Civic Circle and Valley Parkway, uh, was included in the list of projects of, uh, uh, bond program. We've combined the two, uh, projects into one project simply because they're immediately adjacent to each other. Uh, our estimate is three point, three point seven, seven, five million. Uh, looks like we're gonna be a little bit short, uh, in funding, uh, to procure for the, our two, uh, streets. And, uh, we are also recommending that we push this out, uh, a couple of years of the street. Uh, conditions really are not bad. Uh, they're not desperate out here. I think we can get a few more years out of them, uh, and that will help free up some money in some of the earlier years, uh, to cover some of the stuff that we want to get done sooner. You can see on Civic Circle, there's been quite a bit of patching, uh, going on. Uh, we've had waterline construction out there on a year or two ago. Uh, and then on Valley Parkway, we've got some patching and there's some crease and cracking, uh... Corporate Drive, um, now what I've done with this Corporate Drive slides is, uh, the way this is funded, uh, we can move funding around between different segments. Uh, so rather than looking at, uh, the, the costs of, and, and the available money, uh, on each individual segment, uh, I've kind of put together a, uh, summary at the end. Um, this is segments two, three, and four, starting at Railroad Street, uh, and then ending at Holford's Prairie Road. Um, we've got an estimated construction cost of, uh, thirty-five million dollars of the cycle for these three segments, uh, this includes the bridge over the Trinity River. Um, and, uh, we're roughly at thirty percent design. Uh, one of the things I will mention, uh, relative to cost, is that, uh, the, the, the cost estimate for this segment has gone up substantially. Uh, we've discovered some pretty bad soils out there near the Trinity River and, uh, it's very likely that we're gonna have to excavate a lot of bad soil and replace it with good soil, uh, and that was obviously something that was taken into account initially. Um, I, I, these are photos of both ends of, of segments two, three, and four. Uh, this is where we'll pick up at Railroad Street, uh, extending what was done several years ago. Uh, and then, um, on the other end, Holford's Prairie Road, looking back west, uh, that's above where, uh, the Corporate Drive is gonna hit Holford's Prairie Road. Uh, Corporate Drive Segment Five is the piece that's within Carrollton. Um, uh, this project is a little bit further along, uh, simply because, uh, it's, it's in Carrollton and, uh, it was not tied up in the whole discussion about added amenities. Um, so we're at about fifty percent design on this. Uh, we've estimated four point eight million dollars, uh, and, uh, we've got a little piece left, we've got a little piece we'll have to do, uh, west of, of SRT and then some on the east side of SRT. And then just again, photos of the ends, this is where Holford's Prairie Road, where it'll cross, uh, Corporate will cross Holford's Prairie, uh, and then on the opposite end, uh, where it connects, uh, in Carrollton. And then when you go over to the east side of the, uh, SRT, um, right now Carrollton has, uh, one lane in each direction, uh, which is basically half the road. Uh, you can see a large grass area in the second photo and that's where the other two lanes would go. And then Corporate Drive Segment Six, um, the, the, one, I guess the one positive we have, it's sort of an update, is that, uh, the, uh, Kansas City Southern Railroad has given us a verbal, uh, approval of our, uh, final plans for the bridge, uh, railroad bridge. Uh, but we're still working out, uh, the details on a license agreement, uh, the paved road underneath the bridge. Uh, and so they're not gonna give us any written approval, uh, for those bridge plans until we have the license agreement in place. So, you know, we're, we're kind of getting there, but it's really slow. Um, and this is estimated at fourteen million dollars, which includes the railroad bridge, uh, roadway, uh, the, the drainage pump station, and all the other little sundried bits and items. First photo is, uh, Wind Haven Parkway there in front of the, uh, I think it's Independence Elementary School, uh, looking at the railroad. Of course, this is where the road is gonna kind of, you know, go down and then go underneath the railroad. And then the second photo was taken from the Castle Hill side, uh, looking back again toward the, looking toward the railroad in the opposite direction. Now we're gonna summarize the, uh, estimate, cost estimates, and then we get funding. Right now we add up all the segments, uh, with the estimates and then, uh, with some right-of-way, we still are gonna have to purchase, uh, looking at roughly fifty-four million dollars total. I've, uh, broken out different funding sources, uh, for this project and they total, uh, forty-eight point five million dollars. So, uh, we are gonna be, uh, a little bit short. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, five and a half million dollars short, uh, somewhere we've, uh, put, uh, I think it's in, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, we've added, uh, some, uh, bond funding in twenty twenty to cover this shortage. Mill Street and Business One Twenty-One, uh, this was originally funded for three million dollars and, uh, we found out, uh, fairly recently that, uh, we think, uh, Tech Stop is going to include this intersection improvement, uh, when they, uh, redo the interchange at Business One Twenty-One and I thirty-five. Um, however, we're gonna keep some money in the project because, um, uh, there's a possibility we may need to purchase some additional right-of-way, more so than what Tech Stop would buy, and then we also have some money in there for, uh, for, uh, relocate utilities.
Did they give you any idea on the timeframe of the Tech Stop structure?
I think John said last time.
Well, the, there's three different, uh, in, in Louisville, there's three different, uh, interchanges. It's, uh, Business One Twenty-One, uh, Corporate Drive at Main Street. Uh, and of the three, uh, Business One Twenty-One is probably the last of the three that they're gonna work on. Um, the most critical in Louisville, obviously, is Main Street. So, we don't know how long it's gonna be, but in terms of order of importance, it's kind of bottom in terms of Louisville's three.
So we do have to thank, uh, thank John Postle for this. I will tell you, it's really his hard work, uh, that got us this additional funding.
Just a couple of photos, one of the existing intersection, which, you know, obviously we all know is awkward. And, uh, then I took a photo from the, uh, Northwood Mobile Home Park driveway, which is where we would propose to line up the new intersection, uh, and again provide a four-way stop there, or, say no.
This is a major cleanup for the consented old town.
Check the right-of-way. And, and even, even when we have the three million dollars budget and probably two-thirds of that was just providing right-of-way. Uh, South Keighley, uh, we've got, uh, this part that starts at Main Street goes down to Purnell. We originally, uh, took, had taped it all the way down to, uh, Mill Street, but we had to drop that last piece because of that. We've got, uh, two million dollar estimate on this, uh, and, uh, we've identified three point five million. Uh, we're recommending that we leave all that money in the project because we're very early in the design, uh, so we've really haven't gotten into a lot of the details. Uh, and we do know that we're gonna have to buy some significant amount of right-of-way on this project. So, uh, you know, anytime you have to buy right-of-way, that really throws a large unknown into your final budget. We're roughly two years out on construction and, uh, you'll see it photos, uh, this is the street that, uh, Public Services, uh, did a mill and overlay on, uh, not very long ago. And, uh, again, the reason we did that is because we've had a lot of utility construction out there in addition to all the, uh, house construction and subdivision construction and that road is really torn up. And there's, there's no way that it could have lasted for another two years, uh, before we did the, the, the big project. So, uh, we have to go in and do that interim project. This is our Jones and North Keighley. This is, uh, what we're calling our Flat Grant project. Um, originally, uh, we had a project in the, uh, bond, or it was identified when we did the bond, uh, program, uh, that was, uh, North Jones, Cowan, all together in one project. What we've done now is because we have the Flat Grant funding, is we've separated all of the Jones and Keighley, uh, and retained that funding and split it, uh, into two projects. Uh, we've kept, uh, a little over one point two million dollars in the Flat Grant project because that's our city match, so we have to be able to fund that. And then we moved the rest of the money, uh, over to the North Collin Project, which is, uh, I think will be the next project on the slides. Um, the, uh, this is a project, Flat Grant is, uh, is a really, uh, nice program because the Federal Highway Administration really does all the work. Uh, they do the design and take care of the contracting and the construction and, and they actually inspect the project. So staff time that I've invested in this is relatively minimal compared to a normal project. Um, we're looking at construction, uh, sometime in the twenty twenty-one timeframe. And these are just a couple of photos of, uh, Jones and Keighley. Uh, the North Collin Project, again, this was part of the larger project and separated out. Uh, you know, we've got two point, uh, almost two point six million dollars identified for this, uh, and, uh, for now, that looks like it's probably adequate. Um, we're looking at a thirty-seven foot wide street, uh, with curb under and sidewalk, uh, and, uh, we're looking at design in twenty twenty-one with construction in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, some photos, uh, you can see we're probably gonna have some hard decisions, uh, when we start design with regard to where to put driveways and, uh, you know, access and curb or no curb and, you know.
Pushback.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I guess.
This will probably, Council, have a, um, at least a public meeting or two. This is on the second part, ultimately coming out of Cowan closure, but, uh, we were gonna do a miniature, uh, small area plan, if you will. Maybe, uh, look to do some things in the, on, on Cowan aesthetically and, uh, again, this is really highly visible to the, to the residents and the businesses owner out there since, uh, the closure of Cowan.
Questions?
Do they have anything? It's great we started, well.
We are not, we're starting on everything.
It's fine out there with the shovel.
So Mayor, that's all we have tonight. So if you wanted to move us into executive session.
Okay, you can do that. I just, when I hear the, you know, that's a great, great, we'll get that going, get that going, then they say twenty- Okay, you can do that. I just, when I hear the, you know, that's a great, great, we'll get that, go and get that going, then they say twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty...
And David, and David's time, that's enough time for that.
Well, now go into executive session.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we're back in open session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.
All right.